My apologies, we were muted to the outside world. Do you want me to start with attendance, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Okay. Councilman Borton? Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Councilman Burnt?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Here.
And Councilman Borton should be joining us any second from that standpoint. Next up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burnt?
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agendas published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burnt?
We need to take item six off the consent agenda and strike that or vacate that, that item from the agenda with, other than that, there are no changes. And I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
I get the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda, taking item, removing item six. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to as amended. So under, that item was vacated, it was not asked to be moved, correct? Or do we need to move it, take action under moved items?
No, we don't need to take action.
Okay, we don't need to take any actions, so there were no items moved. So next item, under action items, is a city clerk, appeal of denial of mobile cells unit license 21-0060. And I will turn this over to Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So what you have in front of you is a request for, to overturn the decision of the clerk's department in denying a license to Mr. Slater. And so he, we have explained to him what the ordinance says and what the circumstances of our ordinance and what, why he was denied. And he would like to explain his current circumstances. And we did explain to him that that isn't, isn't in the ordinance specifically, but he still would like to speak to the council about it.
Okay, for the record, Councilman Borton joined us at 4:33 PM. Do we have Mr. Slater present?
Mr. Mayor, we do not, not online or in person.
Should we move on to the next action items while we wait to see if he shows up?
That's certainly your prerogative, Mr. Mayor.
Council, what say you? Would you like to move on, table this item for a few minutes? Councilman Burnt?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a problem with that.
I agree.
All right, then we will come back to this item if Mr. Slater does appear. So next item is the information technology fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of $18,135 for reclass of web developer to software engineer. I'll turn this over to Director TV.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to be here this afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council, here before you to talk about a budget amendment that the mayor mentioned. This request is to reclass our web developer position to a software engineer. We have recently had this position vacated, and through this process, we realized that we did not have the correct skill level that we need for this position. And so in talking with some of our employees that use the tools to manage a website, we found that they are cumbersome, they don't allow them the flexibility to edit and control and do integration with media and other things on the website that they would like to do. So right now, a lot of that is being handled by our web developer rather than our employees that can do that task right now. So with this direction, we'd also like to move to an open source CMS that will give them a lot more flexibility in how they're able to maintain the website. And the position as it, as proposed, would also be able to handle managing this tool as well as handling forums and other website needs, which will continue to advance our website to the next level, which we feel is necessary for the city of Meridian. So with that, I will mention that I did send a memo out to you, and happy to read that in full if you'd like, but otherwise, I stand here for questions regarding this amendment.
Thank you, Dave. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh?
Just one question. Dave, does, does this position then kind of indicate that we're moving towards kind of a redesign of the city website? Is that what's intended as well?
Councilman Cavanagh, that is definitely on the radar. That is something that the communications team has brought up, and that team is headed up by the communications manager, and that position is currently vacant. So that is on the radar. It is not something that will be addressed immediately with this position, but it is something that is on the radar and is slated to be evaluated this year for redesign.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh, I'll just add my two cents on to that. And my, my perception is that once we complete a redesign, you should already be thinking about your next one. When and how it's implemented, though, is always subject to time, availability, other things, because I, by the time we decide what our direction is, it takes a year to implement with the crossover and changeover. And you know technology, what can, what can change in a year or perception. So it will constantly be on the radar, from my perception.
Okay.
Council, any additional questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton?
Move that we approve the budget amendment for the fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $18,135 for the reclass of the web developer to software engineer.
Second the motion.
A motion, a second, to approve the budget amendment reclass. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Cork, we'll call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Perrow?
Aye.
Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Burnt?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the amendment is agreed to. Thank you, Dave. Okay, I do not see our item for number 10 individual in the room at this point in time, so we will move on to item 12, which is the Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Report. I see we have Commissioner Greer here to provide that, so we will turn this over to her.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members, and council members at home. My name is Joe Greer. I am the current Parks and Recreation Commission President. I am pleased to be here before you to present the Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Report for 2020. Also, because I have the opportunity to be in front of you, I wanted to personally thank the city for how graciously you handled the past year, not only from announcing protocols to finding, but also to finding alternative methods to hold meetings. Not that you need accolades, but it was appreciated, and it made me proud to be a resident of Meridian. Thank you for that. Before we go through the 2020 Parks and Rec Commission report summary, I would like to also emphasize how the Parks and Recreation Department really showed up over the past year. As people sought refuge from the hovering gloom of COVID by being outdoors, the entire department came together and delivered alternative activities and/or modified existing activities to provide community engagement. Sports, classes, camps, and special events activities were added or modified to allow for residents of all ages to participate throughout the entire year. They even saved Christmas. Okay, now down to business. Every year, the commission develops a list of annual goals. The following items highlight the applicable goals, and of course, they're only possible due to the tremendous efforts of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department staff. Pathway connectivity across Meridian was the commission's top priority for 2020. For the annual Parks and Recreation Commission Pathways Tour, we traveled from Renaissance Park to Bear Creek and South Meridian by bicycle, even the mayor joined us, and Councilman Hoagland, to gain a visual perspective of the current status and conditions of the pathway system. This year, we plan to visit several key pathway locations that were completed last year, including the St. James Court Sidewalk Widening, the Mall-Fall, and the 10 Mile Trailhead. This pathway tours will be, tour will be on Wednesday, May 12, 2021. You're all welcome to join us, just bring a bicycle, a helmet, and smiling faces if we can see those, depending on if we have masks. The commission has also been engaged with reviewing over a dozen pathway segments currently going through project development. We are hopeful that many of these will be ready to move forward towards construction next year. Discovery Park Phase Two Design was placed on hold last year. However, the commission supports the current concept plan and design phase to include areas for activity play, softball, teens, and the bike park. Once this is complete, we hope to see construction begin sometime next year. From what I understand, understand, council has requested recent updates to the concept plan, including the expansion of the skate park and bike park areas. I was pleased to see something for teens, although my son is kind of outgrown the park system, and we didn't really have a lot in place for that. So I'm, I double support that. And the commission has viewed and discussed the preliminary concept ideas for the community, community center. We support and look forward to the future design concepts and feel this would be a tremendous asset to the community. The commission also participated in a partnership with the Meridian Arts Commission to add themes and identity in the form of art to Renaissance and Champion Park, and we look forward to continuing the partnership for the 10 Mile Trailhead. We gladly participated in the design of the Heroes Park Parking Lot Expansion. Anyone who's tried to park there, you probably are excited as well. This project has been designed and bid and is scheduled to begin construction this summer. It will be between sport seasons to avoid creating more of an issue with parking. Before I stand for questions, there were so many items that I wanted to cover, but I wanted to keep it short. I did want to add that Kleiner Park has a new pollinator garden near the community garden, a new six-piece gym, which most of the stuff you guys are already aware of. Also, the arborist is working on a self-guided tree walk, which will be kind of exciting if people like trees. Also, if you haven't heard, the Lakeview Golf Club is officially being operated by the city, and we toured, we toured the facility for our April meeting to view the condition of the course and to learn more about the operation and future plans for the facility. So if you haven't been out there, it looks, it looks really great, and they're putting a lot of efforts into the trees, you know, the lawn, staff. Other than that, I stand for any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton?
Not a question, but a comment. Joe, thank you for the report, and I'm glad that the commission is keeping that community center on the radar. It's no surprise, but I mean, it's in the CFP, and it's, whether it's downtown or somewhere else, we, it's just a critical part of the Parks Department and what our community depends on. So I think it's fantastic that the focus still remains on that, and we keep that commitment to ensuring that resource is available to our communities. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman Borton.
Council, any additional questions or comments?
Mayor?
Councilman Perrow?
Just wanted to say a quick thank you to, to the Parks and Recs Commission, and any chance that we have to thank our volunteers. I, I know that we will take it because they, this commission just has this huge heart for our community, and I love seeing it, and I love that they want to make a difference, and they've had great leadership over the last few years. And I just want to say thank you very much as your liaison and as a member of our community for the commitment that's been made and the time and energy and phenomenal amount of care and thought that's gone into the role that you serve. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Perrow.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burnt?
Good to see you, Joe. It's always a pleasure to have fellow commissioners at the Parks Commission come and speak to us, and I just, I just want to echo what my fellow council members have said in regard to your effort and the time you spend, your volunteerism. You've done such a great job in, in all things Parks and Rec, especially the Christmas stuff that you originally got involved with a long, long time ago. And so you guys do such a great job, and I just want to say thank you. And if you can express that to your fellow commissioners, I'd really appreciate it as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. I, I started out because of you, as you know, with the Christmas activities, and I definitely will pass that along. I'm glad I'm wearing a mask, because you guys are making me turn a little red. Wasn't expecting that.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. And I was hoping that Councilwoman Burnt would say it due to his longstanding relationship and involvement with the Parks and Rec Commission, but kudos to all you guys, too.
Mr. Mayor, I hope to see you guys at the Parkway's Tour, right?
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
Council?
What is that date one more time?
It is May 12. And if you want further information, we can get that sent out to you.
Okay.
I don't know that we have identified a time. I believe that we're leaving from the Trailhead. TBD, TBD. We're gonna talk about it.
Awesome.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
You guys have a good evening.
Council, we are back to where we started, but our interested party is not here.
Yes.
So would it be appropriate to vacate, or would we like to hear from Sergeant, or sorry, Lieutenant Harper on the situation? What would be the most appropriate step at this time?
I, I think that would be the best course of action within our, could at least explain why. The letters is in the packet as to the reasons as well, but then the council can decide if they want to make a decision or give the opportunity of another chance.
Mr. Harper, at your pleasure.
Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me today. I'll be very short and sweet. After reviewing this applicant's application for a mobile cells license, we denied him based off of one of the subsections in regards to why we deny applicants based off of the applicant's past. So it was very clear cut. The clerk's office did an excellent job explaining it, as well as legal explaining it to him. He verified that it was him that put the application in, and the, the information we had in regards to his past was accurate, and he just wanted to be heard. Tried to explain the rules and how things work, but he wanted to be here today. He chose not to be, so that's about all I have. I'll stand for a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Neri?
Yeah, I guess for the purpose of the record, at least, the, the applicant did have all of this explained to him as well, and as council recalls, we've just recently went through this ordinance and, and changed some of the lifetime restrictions. We changed some of the years, brought some of them down a little bit to do that. What I discussed with our deputy, Emily Kane, and I spoke with Lieutenant Harper briefly before the meeting, is we may, it may be in the city's interest to be specifically what you can appeal, because unless it isn't you, or unless this, the judgment was expunged, you may recall last year, we had one that the judgment had been expunged, but our records didn't indicate that. He went and got the proof of it, and we went ahead and issued the license. So unless it isn't you, or it's expunged, there is no other discretion for the council to grant these licenses in the current ordinance. So if you'd like us to bring back a change to put those specific grounds in there, so that, again, I sympathize with folks, I understand, I appreciate people who have changed their lives, but we've taken a position on where these belong, whether people should be going up to people's houses, in their backyards, in their house, what types of, of history we would prefer they not have, or at least not recently. We could certainly do that.
Mr. Neri, that's where I was going to go at the end of this conversation, was either to make it clear that it's not appealable altogether, or to clearly define what is appealable.
Oh, from a due process standpoint, Mr. Mayor, it is a little concerning to us to make it unappealable, if there is some grounds to appeal it, but clearly, the council has the discretion to say a person with this particular charge within this particular time period can either never have a license, if it's a certain types of offenses, they can never have a license, or they have to wait three, five, 10 years, whatever it may be.
Councilman Borton?
Well, Mr. Mayor, this, in this one in particular, seems very clear. The, the direction from code is clear, the facts are relatively clear, his absence doesn't add anything to it, so I don't know of a decision other than denying the appeal.
Does council have a position on what Mr. Neri stated regarding, should we limit what appeals are hearable?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton?
A quick comment on that, it's hard to prejudge and pre-vet what may be appealable. It's, you almost err on the side of due process, and if an individual wants to come to council and have something that shows it wasn't them, as, as Mr. Neri's describing, unlikely, but I guess they have that right, if that rare circumstance ever exists. It's probably a lot easier for us to administer the extra hearing that allows that to happen than try to foreclose the right to even request it on the front end. So every now and then, I think we're just going to get snagged with a hearing like this that might be easy to resolve, but it's a lesser of two evils.
Well, then with that, do I have an official motion from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burnt?
I move that we deny the appeal of mobile cells unit license 21-0060 by Brandon Slater of Barrier Pest Control.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to deny the pill. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the item is denied. Thank you, attendant. Council, we reached the end of our work session agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burnt?
I move that we adjourn.
I get the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Council, we will call the meeting to order. For the record, it is April 27, 2021, at 6:02 PM. We will begin this evening's regular City Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Yes.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item on the agenda is the community invocation, which tonight will be delivered by Pastor Tim Pughsey with the Valley Shepherd Church of the Nazarene. If you all would join us in this, in the community invocation, or take this as a moment of silence. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, we call on you tonight in behalf of our community, and we thank you for the many ways in which you have blessed the community of Meridian. We find it such a blessing and a privilege to be a part of this community. And we thank you, Lord, for the good people who serve our community in lots of different ways. Tonight, I pray for our mayor. I've reflected so many times of how he's came into office in one of the most challenging seasons, really, in my lifetime. And thank you for the way you've helped him and our city council and our other leaders. Thank you now for our new police and fire chiefs, Chief Pastor Chea, and for Chief Bloom. Pray, Lord, that you would be with them and all who serve with them, and all of our first responders and the people who serve in this building work behind the scenes. Lord, I pray for our city council tonight. I thank you for these who serve. I think in so many ways, it's probably a thankless job, but I thank you for the interest in our community, the passion for our community they bring to the table, and their willingness to serve in this way. And, Lord, I pray wisdom and guidance for them tonight as they deal with various issues. And, Lord, may the conversations and the decisions that are made reflect godly wisdom and wisdom that comes from you. Lord, I pray that you'd help us to ever be mindful of those in our community who are struggling, just have their basic needs met. And again, we thank you for the privilege of living in this community, and we look forward to what you're going to do in the days and the years ahead. In the name of Christ, we pray, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Jim. Our next item is public forum. Mr. Cork, do we have anyone signed up? Oh, I'm sorry. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
We do have an item, item five, that the applicant has asked to be continued, but in the interest of public testimony, we're going to leave it open, just in case there's folks in the audience that would like to offer some testimony. So with that said, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the item is agreed to. Agenda is adopted. Mr. Cork, do we have anyone signed up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, not for that topic.
Okay. The next item will be a proclamation, which is Denim Day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I'm going to ask Bee Black, Lupe Ingham, Chris Davis, and Becca McGuire to join our city council president, Treg Burnt, at the podium to read, for the reading of a proclamation.
Thank you. Very honored to read this proclamation this evening. I think the reason why is because I'm the only guy up here that's wearing jeans, and so since this is Denim Day, thank you. But very honored to do this, so thank you, Mayor, for that. I thank you for the opportunity to have you guys here, the Women and Children's Alliance, to accept this proclamation. Whereas the United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Women's and Children's Alliance has declared April 28, 2021, as Denim Day. And whereas both events are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault remains a serious issue in our society, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were also instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of assault and forcible rape, and whereas with proper education on the matter, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce incidents of this alarming, psychologically damaging crime, and whereas the city of Meridian is an important partner in the Women's and Children's Alliance's efforts to educate our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault. Therefore, I, Council President Treg Burnt, on behalf of Mayor Robert E. Simison, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2021, as Denim Day for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And the city of Meridian encourage all citizens to speak out against sexual assault and support local efforts to provide help and healing to victims of these crimes. Thank you.
Can I have acceptance and a couple words?
How about we do that after? I'm a rookie. I'm a rookie at this. So if you guys, if all you want to offer some remarks.
Thank you. So I'm Bee Black, and I've had the privilege of being the CEO at the WCA for the last 13 years. And I just am so honored and privileged that we are able to stand here tonight with your mayor and with your council and have this proclamation read. Raising awareness is what Denim Day is all about, raising awareness around how insidious and how damaging sexual assault is in our community. As a service provider to anyone in your community who has suffered that trauma, we are ready, willing, and able to assist, and so really invite you to please learn more about Denim Day, about the origins of it, and to do, just like the council president is doing, wear denim tomorrow, if you're comfortable doing so. Thank you.
I will really quickly, on behalf of the council and the mayor and all of your police force and everyone else who has reached out to engage with us recently, I want to say thank you. I am a citizen of the city, or the town of Meridian City, the big growing town. I actually just live right over the bridge, and it took me like 20 minutes to get here. Couldn't believe it. Took me longer to get from downtown Boise. But I really appreciate the efforts to let members of this community know that the WCA is here for them, because the WCA is a free resource for anyone who might be listening now, or you might know someone who is suffering from the trauma of sexual assault, because it can have a lifelong impact. And I am guaranteeing you that you probably do know someone. If you don't know someone, now you will. And if it's not the WCA, there are lots of other resources, but just know that that can have a lifelong impact, whether it's a child or a young adult, a young man or a woman, or someone who's in a relationship when it happens. Being believed and just having someone offer resources, and then reaching out to those that have that knowledge to offer that deeper help can mean so much, and it can make such a difference to the rest of that individual's life and their family and everybody else who touches them. So I appreciate being here as a member of this community, and I'm really excited about the more, the deeper opportunities and relationships that we can have. So reach out to us. We've got a 24-hour hotline and a website, and we'd love to be here for you. But on this special day, I think it's really great. Tomorrow is Denim Day. Wear your denim. If you're on social media, throw your picture out there and tag us, and we'll be sharing all day long. This is an international event, and millions of people across the US tomorrow. We'll be joining you in Meridian, Idaho tomorrow. The mayor of Boise will also be making a proclamation, so that is hundreds of thousands of people. And those two together, we hope each year we'll be making it bigger. So we are so excited to be here tonight, and so we're so grateful for you for making this proclamation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Maybe just a quick comment that I know we sometimes reach a bigger audience, and if people need help, their 24-hour sexual assault hotline is 208-345-7273, and their domestic abuse hotline is 208-343-7025.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strater, for bringing that to everyone's attention, and appreciate you, Council President Burnt, for doing that on my behalf, and Bee and everyone at the Women and Children's Alliance. It's been great having many opportunities to engage with you over the last several months. There is a Meridian Patrol car out there that has a pendulum on it. It's the newest addition to our fleet in terms of a car that is identified for the wild of the work the Women's and Children's Alliance says. I know that's not necessarily tonight, but we appreciate the strong partnership working together, so thank you. Thank you. Okay, council, we are ready to move on to our action items for this evening. First item up is a final plat modification for Lupine Cove, MFP 2021-004. I will turn this over to Alan. Open this public hearing with staff, or it's not public hearing. Open this with, this over to Alan for comments.
Good evening, council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, there we go. There I am. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a modification to a final plat. The property consists of 6.89 acres. It's located at 4,000 North McDermott Road, which is between Usted and McMillan, and it's zoned RA. So this final plat for 26 buildable lots on six, a little more than six and a half acres of land in RA was approved by the council on February 9th. Following the city council hearing, ACHD requested for North Patmos Avenue to be shifted to the east-o line or the sub-street, which would line up with the subdivision to the north and also increase the offset to McDermott. So you can see here, this is the original configuration. If you can see my pointer here, it's been shifted, basically shifted and sloped a little bit, so there was two lots there when we started. There's three lots there now. No increase in lots, however. Staff has reviewed the proposed final plat for substantial compliance, because this modification only involves a shift in the northern stub to the east in creation of additional track for irrigation easement. With no additional lots, staff finds that the proposed final plat is in substantial compliance with the approved preliminary plat request. However, I want to mention that the revised landscape plan did differ slightly from the approved final plat landscape plan, and that there were trees that were shown as existing that have been removed. Staff has added a condition that prior to the city engineer's signature on the final plat, the applicant shall submit a tree mitigation plan approved by the city arborist that accounts for how qualifying trees that were shown on the that accounts for how qualifying trees that were shown on the approved landscape plan and proposed for removal will be mitigated per UDC 113B Tennessee. And with that, I would entertain any motions or any questions.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions for Alan? Okay, see, Mr. Schultz is with us. Matt, do you have any comments you'd like to add?
Let's see here. There I am. Hi, Matt Schultz, 8421 South Timel. Sorry, you guys have to see me twice in one week on the final plat modification. Been doing this for 20 years, and this is the only two I've ever had. So it's pretty simple. I think it was the day of our hearing. We got a comment from ACHD to move that back and also to, for a couple of different reasons that Alan covered. And that's pretty much it. We don't need to get any changes of code or do anything crazy. We just adopted the wrong graphical representation of our final plat. We need to replace it with a new one. And we will, we do agree with staff's conditions on resolving a tree issue where the sewer construction for the high school came down that road 30 feet deep and wiped out a few trees last fall. And I think our landscape architect was a little too accurate, and we're going to mitigate for those within our site or probably put two or three times the number required along McDermott to accommodate them. So with that, we won't do it again. We'll make sure we get these comments back early enough, and we don't have to do any more final plat modifications. So thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions? If not, do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I made that we approved the final plat modification for Lupine Cove, MFP 2021-0004. Second motion.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, called roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavaner.
Aye.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to.
Thank you.
And I, Mr. Schultz. Next item is a public hearing for Meridian South Fire Station and Police Substation, H2020-0008. And open this public hearing with staff comments and turn it over to Alan.
Thank you very much, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. This, I think, is a relatively simple one. The site consists of four acres of land, zoned RUT, located at 2385 East Lake Hazel Road. This is directly adjacent to Discovery Park. This is Discovery Park here. It is just west of Eagle. Property is zoned RUT in Ada County, surrounded by R4, R15, and R40. The comprehensive plan recommends this property for a medium density residential. And this is a request for an annexation and zoning of four acres of land with the R8 Zone District to develop 11,600 square foot fire station and 11,000 square foot police substation building. I have not received any comments from the public. So here is the site plan. So although much of the land surrounding this site was zoned in an annex in 2015 as a South Meridian Annexation, the subject property was not included as part of this annexation. As I mentioned, the site is directly adjacent to the new Discovery Park, which is what you see over here. Plans are to develop a fire station, which would be down here to the south, and a police station, which would be up here to the north, and these will be done separately. They're going to be on different timelines. The fire station is planned to be constructed, I believe what they said was 2022. Following annexation, if this were annexed, then there would be a conditional use that's required for both of these because these are public or what are called public or quasi-public uses in the R8 Zone District. The applicant will be required to construct a new north-south collector roadway. So this does not exist here now, but this is shown on our master street map, and ACHD has already talked to them about this. Right now, there is an existing access from the north, and there's already access to Discovery Park. The plans are eventually that they will close off those driveways, and I believe they will also eventually be closing off the access for Discovery Park off of Lake Hazel. It is intended to get as many accesses off of arterial roads as possible and to connect the accesses onto this new collector road. Although ACHD is requesting that the applicant construct a five-foot-wide sidewalks along the collector, one for the police station and one for the fire station, the, per the Parks Department, the applicant will be required to construct a 10-foot-deep tash pathway along this sidewalk. So ACHD said five feet, but our Trails Master Plan talks about 10-foot pathways along both of these. The applicant is well aware of this, the city, well aware of this, and are amenable to this. Just as a point of information, this Collector Street and Lake Hazel is eventually planned for signalization. That was something that would be dealt with in the future. The applicant has submitted colored elevation for both of the buildings. Architecture consists of slope rough buildings with CMU and woodgrain metal panels as primary fill materials and exposed timber frame and metal soffit accents as the accent materials. The proposed architecture will be reviewed in detail with the administrative design review. It must meet the requirements of the City of Meridian Architectural Standards Manual. That would be done with the certificate of zoning compliance. The Meridian Planning Commission heard this item on April 1. There was no discussion. They moved for approval, and with that, I would entertain any comments or questions.
Thank you, Alan. Council, any questions for staff? And with that, do we have the applicant here?
We do. I'll be speaking as the applicant. My name is Gunner Gladix, and I'm the architect on the project. My address is 11400 Olympus Way, Gig Harbor, Washington. So I wanted to say to Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for letting us speak here today, and Alan, thank you. That was a good introduction to the project. As you know, the project, the intent of the project is to help the city increase the level of service to growing areas of the city and reduce response times for fire and police. The opportunity to use this site is beneficial with the ability to provide police and fire on one site and hopefully provide some economical development of the site. The, as far as our conditions of approval go, I just wanted to say that we agree with all of the conditions that staff has given to us in the report and will execute those in the next phase of design. Thank you. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? And I'm sorry, my screen just went blank. So if anyone out there is wanting to speak, you're going to have to speak up.
I had to reboot the cameras in the room, so that's why our screens went this way, but you should be coming back online now.
Okay, we are back. Okay, and we have no one who signed up, but this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to provide testimony on this item? Or anybody online who would like to provide testimony? If so, use the raise your hand feature at the bottom or come up to the podium at this time. We do have one person who's raised their hand. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Annette Alonso coming in the meeting now.
Thank you. You can state your name and address for the record, and that will be recognized for three minutes.
This is Annette Alonso at 2204 East Hyperdrive in Meridian. I'm just to the north of this site in Black Rock. Just have a question about when the police substation is going to be built. Will that be built simultaneously with the fire station? Or is that planned for a future date?
Would the applicant like to answer? Would they like me to try to answer that?
I can, I can give some information on the construction start. So from our perspective, what we know to date is that the fire station is the likely candidate to start construction in early 2022. The site development portion of the entire site will be completed so that all the street trees and all of the required streetscape and landscape will all be completed during the initial phase of construction. And that the police precinct, I believe, and I may need somebody else to speak up to it, is still under review for, in budgeting. So I am unaware of a solid start date for the police substation. But we will be landscaping and creating a path for that so that it isn't, won't be a dirt field or anything like that. We'll have landscaping and appropriate city standard, city standards for that.
I think, to my knowledge, going to answer that as best as we can at this point in time is there's a north precinct and a south precinct, both under consideration and at this time. And that, hopefully, that answers your question as best we can today. Is there anybody else who'd like to provide testimony on this item? If not, Cavaner, any last comments?
None from us. Thank you.
Okay. And council, do I have a motion or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I knew that we close a public hearing.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
It seems like it's in the best interest of the city to annex this, and we certainly will need a future fire station and police station, no matter when we ultimately do them. So unless there's other discussion, I would put a motion out there to prove this. After considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, I move to approve file number H2021-0008 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of April 27, 2021.
I have a motion, a second, to approve this item. Is there any discussion? If not, called roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavaner.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is approved. Next up is a public hearing for 1450 West Ustick Road, H2021-0016. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alan, can you close yours out? Thank you. Perfect. Everybody can see my screen and hear me? Thank you. There we go. First item by me tonight is 1450 West Ustick. The application before you is a development agreement modification. The site consists of four acres of land, currently zoned CC, and located at 1450 West Ustick or the northeast corner of Ustick and Linder. The applicant, well, first, the site was annexed in 2014 and was short-platted for four lots. The plat was never recorded, but the DA and zoning ordinance was, and so both are still applicable. The applicant proposes to amend the existing development agreement, which was under the Sugarman subdivision. The amendment is to replace the existing concept plan and amend or add new provisions consistent with the new development plan. The existing DA concept plan depicts three buildings: a gas station, a multi-tenant building, and a bank with a drive-through. The existing DA restricted the location of the drive-through through the hearing process and stated that it could not be facing the east. The new concept plan depicts eight single-story multi-tenant office buildings that could contain those uses allowed in the CC zoning district. The applicant has indicated that they only allow office uses within their developments, but staff did not recommend specifically prohibiting any uses. Key points of interest for this site are going to be as follows. The public road stub on the subject site's northern boundary, that was not part of the original approvals and comes from Eddington Commons, which is this. ACHD does not provide action or conditions of approval on development agreement modifications, so they will not act on this. They did not submit anything other than a letter. They will not provide comments or conditions until a future development application is applied for, which would be a certificate of zoning compliance. I have discussed that in more depth and recommended certain provisions within the staff report. In addition, the Linder access point should be closed with the future CCC application submittal. The need for this access is mitigated as there would be an access through Eddington Commons to the north and then out to Linder Road. It would be a safer access to Linder Road. In addition, the applicant is requesting a council waiver to reduce the required landscape buffers along the northern and eastern property boundaries from the required 25 feet to 15 feet as shown, and includes a pedestrian pathway within both buffers on the north and the east. In addition to the buffers themselves, the site plan shows a drive aisle and parking spaces between the rear yard fences of future homes in Eddington Commons and the proposed commercial buildings. Overall, the building should be at least 45 feet from the eastern property line and 60 feet from the northern property line, which is ample separation between the uses. The MDA only requires council action, so that's why I did not go to commission. And staff does recommend approval of this subject DA modification. I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions for staff? Councilman Burnt.
Hey, Joe, thank you. Just one question for me. Is there a reason why staff didn't recommend prohibiting uses?
Only because the the CC zone already has some restrictions in it naturally, and with the proposed buffers and the the parking spaces, again, being 60 feet and 45 feet, we just didn't find it necessary. We think that these tenant spaces alone will kind of limit what uses go in there. Counsel is more than welcome to. I did list some probable uses within my staff report that are more specific that I think will go here, and those are limited compared to what is in the our use table. And if you want to use that as a condition, that's perfectly fine, or you can leave it as is.
Council, any additional questions for staff? Is the applicant with us in person or online this evening?
Should be online.
Online?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Sorry about that, Mark.
To the council, thank you. My name is Mark Bigelow. I reside at 1716 North Stagno Bello Place in Eagle, Idaho. First of all, Joe's been great. It's been it's been good. There's some nuances to this. There were some nuances with Eddington Commons access and ACHD that we worked through, and it's been good. It's been really good. We fully ready to comply with whatever ACHD decides with access and any any further restrictions as we go through the certificate of zoning compliance and in terms of uses that we have in marketing, and we have reservations, and the majority of the reservations, just to give you an idea, are insurance agencies, real estate agencies, real estate appraisal. We do have one nail salon, a couple of counseling, and a therapy.
Mr. Mayor? No breweries or anything like that?
No breweries.
Any restaurants or anything?
No restaurants, yeah.
Super, super popular places where they'll take up a ton of parking.
That's exactly, yeah, no. We, the, I don't know if you have the elevations up there, but on the application, we showed the elevations. We I live in Eagle. We've done this four times previously in the Houston area. We we want to be, we want them to be professional. We want them to be Class A office-type. Look modern and add to the, to the community.
Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Just a question, Mark. I'm just kind of curious, you know, as we're hopefully coming out of this pandemic, but people have spent, a lot of people a year at home, working. Is there still a demand for office space, in your opinion?
That's a great question. Yes, especially the office space that we build. So what's unique about us is they're they're 12, about a little over 1,200 square foot units. They're buildings, so each building has four units in it. And we actually will, we will make them a condo. So they're going to be able to purchase it for themselves and and own it, and it's it's something unique that we've found that people really like. And rather than being a big office building of four stories or or skyscraper, people can come in and if they need an office space, 1,200 square feet is a really good, good size for them. Need to buy two, they'll buy two.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
So just a question about the pedestrian access. These these types of developments, they tend to, at least I've noticed, and specifically really in this north Meridian area, there's times of the days that they can get really full if you have kind of retail shopping, restaurant type of uses, maybe less so with the insurance agents and and whatnot. Is there going to be walkability from the north to the south side in between the buildings? There is there going to be some some walkways, pedestrian access?
It'll be, they'll be around, not in between. Say the front four and the back four, but there will be walkability around via cross or sidewalks.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up to that question?
Counsel, man, hold on.
Mark, so what do you have in between the buildings? Is it just landscaping?
It'll be landscaping, greenery. It'll be grass with some shrubs.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, there are no signups online or in the back.
Okay, if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to provide testimony on this item, you come forward and state your name and address for the record, or if there's anybody online would like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting. Seeing no one in the audience or online, would the applicant like to make any final comments? We have no desire for additional final comments, so counsel, I'll turn this over to you for next steps.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Borden.
One quick question to staff. The what triggers that that Linder Road access closes and the U stick is right in, right out? Is that correct?
Counsel, I'm Borden. That is correct.
Okay.
And then they'll have the access through Eddington Commons up to Linder.
Got it. Okay, and that's an existing condition already in the DA.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Thank you. I also have a question for Joe. So it was my understanding from reading the staff report that the applicant does have a decision to make regarding what happens with that step street. Did I misunderstand that? It sounds like the applicant said they were in agreement with whatever ACHD decides, but it doesn't sound like ACHD is makes a decision on this necessarily. It's just that the applicant needs to be compliant with their code. Am I understanding that correctly?
Counsel, I'm for all that yes and no. Your secondary comment is correct. Your first one, not so much. It's not that the applicant hasn't made a decision. They're just they're kind of waiting on ACHD to make that call. Their code, their policy states that they need to end that street from Eddington Commons because the public street ended in a cul-de-sac. That seems like a waste of space. And the applicant and staff agree on that. In order to do what they're showing here, and it would be that hammerhead is shown, it would be a public use easement. But they have to ask ACHD for a waiver for that, but ACHD will not accept a waiver request until there is an application that they act on, which would be a CCC. The applicant does have a secondary site plan, so to speak, that would show that cul-de-sac, just in case that is what ACHD tells us to do, and the site will still work with that. But we are going forward with this because this is the the hope and what we want out of this. Hope that answers your question.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Yes, it does, although I wouldn't be opposed to seeing that if if you have it available or if the applicant has it available, just so I can get a visual understanding of what what it is. I think I I think I understand it, but I just want to see it if possible.
I do not have that out layout. I do not know if the applicant does.
Counsel, any further questions or comments? See if the applicant has that information.
Mr. Mayor, while he's looking, question for Joe.
Counsel, man, hold on.
And Joe, if if it is a cul-de-sac, it it'll meet all the code requirements for diameters for fire trucks and everything else that would traverse the area and have that access. It's it's really no different than we've done in other locations. Is that correct?
Counsel, man, hold on. That is correct. Yeah, I'd have to meet the turning radius and all that, big 48-foot radius, which is again why staff and the applicant thinks that for the site layout, it, you know, it's a waste of space when it, this would function the same. But it's up to ACHD to make that final call, but they will not act on this application.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, just to comment on that, I I agree. This is, this would be a better, better use and layout for for this situation, so it sounds like we do need to take action to make that a reality, to have them make their decision for it, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
Another question for Joe. So if obviously, the the Linder Road access needs to, won't exist, and so it sounds like there's just this one entrance on Eustick, and if it's required to be a right in, right out, does staff have concerns then about movement around this development and access? And whatnot?
Counsel, I'm for no, and that would be because of the two-way driveway all the way around the buildings. Fire is signed off. All their turning radiuses are met around the corners, so we're satisfied with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, man, hold on.
Just to comment further on this particular property, I'm very familiar with it since I just live a half mile down down the road, so go through here, this intersection quite often. And and really for the use of this property, the amount of land that's there, I I think this is a much better layout and activity pattern for than what was proposed before. Certainly, the what was proposed before was allowed and and was was approved, but I I think this is a a better plan for this this location, and I think it'll it'll work well and with the existing homes that are that are in the area as well, so I I certainly in support of it. Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, man, hold on.
I would move that we close the public hearing for H 2021 dash zero zero one six.
Mr. Holden, can I get a hold of on that motion? The staff is still.
Oh, they're still searching? Okay.
That they it's in progress. I've seen the it going back and forth. I just don't know where it is. We can at least provide that. Joe, how close are we?
I'm going to pull it up right now. Maybe if I can figure out this whole technology stuff. No, okay. Good job, Zoom. Here we go. It just shows the overlay of what that would look like. Yeah, they would lose a building.
Counsel, any further questions with that? Okay, counsel, hold on. Back to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, man, hold on.
I move that we close the public hearing for H 2021 dash zero zero one six.
I have a motion a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, man, hold on.
After hearing all staff and applicant testimony, I move to approve H 2021 dash zero zero one six as presented in the staff report for this evening, and I just want to make mention that we do agree with reduced landscape buffers that have been presented in staff report.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, clerk, we called roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Perrow.
Aye.
Straitor.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
Burnt.
All eyes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Next item is a public hearing continued from March 23, 2021 for Compass Point subdivision, H 2020 dash zero one zero zero. The applicant had asked to have this continued to 51121 originally. And that was partly because I think they understand counsel likely will not make a decision tonight due to pending legislative action that is yet resolved at the state legislature this year, where we've not been taking action on applications typically over five acres. However, based upon the interest from the community that's here tonight, we we were going to open this up to take testimony from the public. I don't know if the applicant ever may did decide to join us.
I believe he is here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the applicant has joined us this evening for this conversation, but there's no no additional staff over unless Joseph wants to give a brief overview. If counsel wants it, otherwise we will just go into testimony from the public. Okay, would the applicant like to make any comments before we go into additional testimony from the community?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, man, burnt.
Just one comment. If 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 there are folks in the community that are able to come back and testify in two weeks, we welcome that as well. Just if if there are folks in the audience that aren't able to return in two weeks, this is the reason why we're allowing public testimony this evening. So if you if you were able to come back in two weeks, that would be helpful. Just wanted to make that comment.
Would the applicant like to make any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for the record, Steve Arnold, 18 Land Consultants, 1785 Whisper Cove, Boise, 83709, and I assume you can hear me. My camera's not working.
We can hear you, yes.
Good deal. So, yeah, based on some recommendations, we requested to table this item and for the two weeks till May 11. So we're not really prepared to provide a a presentation tonight. I can certainly give you an overview, but I think, you know, same with the staff can do that as well. So if if the council would like, I I could just help provide some input to any concerns that the neighbors have and then take notes and and possibly have those addressed at our next city council meeting.
That will be our plan. Does counsel feel like even like any additional comments or background on this item at this time? Not saying anything, so we will just continue to public testimony for this evening. Understanding to those that are present, there won't be any rebuttal from the applicant this evening. Anything will be done in a future hearing when this is continued to whatever date is chosen. And we will ask if you testified previously to not testify. But with that, we will move on to taking public testimony on this item. Mr. Clerk, I'll turn it over to you to bring up those who provided wish to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were over 50 sign-ins on this. Some signed in on other projects, so they're not captured here. On your desktops, there is a link called sign-in dashboard, so if you want to see the complete list of sign-ins, you can. Of the 50 plus who signed in, only two, four, seven indicated they wish to testify, and I'm not sure they want to continue this evening, but first would be John Buckner.
And as you come forward, if you can state your name and address for the record and be recognized for three minutes.
Greetings, Mayor and Counsel. My name is John Buckner. I live at 3877 South Picasso Avenue in Meridian. Thank you for this evening and giving me the opportunity to speak. I did have a presentation prepared, but in good faith and consideration for the council and my neighbors here, I will withhold that presentation for the continuance. I just want to say I hope many of you have seen and read the emails that you've received from the community. And so simply saying, you know how we feel. You know what the overwhelming feeling and concern is of the community, and I just ask that you take that into consideration even now, or at least especially in the upcoming hearing. I do plan on returning and testify on our continuance, as I do hope the rest of my neighbors as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, we have questions. Counsel, man, Cavanagh.
Mr. Buckner. Just appreciate being here tonight. Just curious, if you've had an opportunity to engage with the applicant about your concerns since the last hearing, has there been any communication between you and the applicant?
Not, I have not.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next is Annette Alonso, and she is online.
Annette, if you could unmute yourself. There.
Okay, I'm going to withhold my testimony until the 11th, when we see this again.
Before we go any further, is the 11th the date that I I know that that's the request. I I just want everyone else to don't know if the 11th will be the date. I guess I would say that at this point in time, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
The request, the date was because of me. I, that's going to be my Joe show again on that council date, so I figured it made sense, but if counsel knows that it's going to be further out, then obviously that's up to the council to decide.
I I think that's the question from counsel is, is that going to be enough time for us to know where the legislature is? It seems pretty close.
Mr. Mayor, next, and I apologize, I can't read the last name, but Rhonda.
Thank you. I too, well, my name is Rhonda Unruh, U N R U H, and I live at 3246 South Merlow Way in Meridian. And I too would like to withhold commenting until the next meeting.
Maybe we'll go to this way. Is there anybody that would like to provide testimony this evening on this application because they don't know if they'll be able to make a future one? That that gets us to that point. Is there anybody online that would like to provide testimony on this item this evening? So use the raise your hand feature on this item. Seeing nobody wishing to provide testimony this evening. Counsel, I guess the question for you is, when would you like to consider continuing this item too?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
We discussed this with some of the applications last week, and it's, I was under the impression from Council President Burnt that the 11th was fairly full. Did I misunderstand that? I believe we were moving things out to the 18th at that point. And then we had a discussion, brief discussion about possibility of an additional meeting, but I'm not sure if that was ever determined.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can speak to the number of hearings. May 11, there are four public hearings. One is UDC text amendment. There are two short plats for projects downtown, and then another that's an annexation of 20-plus acres. We had moved beyond that, but this was continued previously before, so it is sort of in line ahead of the others, if that's what counsel wanted to do.
Anexation on the 11th is a continuance as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, man, hold on.
I was just intrigued by the the thought of a Joe show. I mean, that we could go viral with. I was just intrigued by the thought of a Joe show, I mean, that, we could go viral with that thing, so I, I, I don't know. I mean, obviously, we put off several of these public hearings and annexation requests due to potential legislative action, so we'll have to pay the price at some point in time of having some long meetings, and, and so it's, it's, you know, depends on everybody else's schedule and whatnot, if we want to go along that night, so be it. Within a reasonable timeframe, of course, but I'm willing to do that if the 11th is what the rest of the council wants to do.
My only concern with the 11th is that we are not gonna, that we're gonna ask these people to put on the 11th, and we're gonna be right back here the same, it's gonna be close. The legislature has decided not to do anything this week, they basically are done for the week, which means they're going at least through next week, which takes you up to the 9th or that, that time, so I'd be really concerned about trying to rush it to the 11th. One thing I do think we'll put down tomorrow when we talk about agendas is we'll see if we can identify a special meeting date, that we can start moving things to maybe in May for opportunities, but this one, I, I would think the 18th is maybe close. Even that's close.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilmember Hogan hits, makes a very important point. We're gonna have some long nights ahead of us, and as best as we can, the, the long nights that don't necessarily have a lot of public participation, I think are, are those the nights that we should go along. I, I feel for the public, we invite them back and then to continue it again, or then ask them to go through a late night. I don't know if that's necessarily fair to them. I'm, I'm certainly supportive of us, the, Mr. Mayor, Council President, looking at a, a special date for us to take some of this backlog, so that we can one, take care of some of these applications without having to go late at night for the public. Mr. Mayor, I agree, I think the 18th is still cutting it close. I don't know what the 25th looks like. If that's a date that we would want to look at, I'm, I, I feel bad for the applicant, I feel bad for the public when we have to keep continuing this, and the one thing we've learned this year about the legislature is they're very unpredictable, and it's hard for us to make decisions when we've got that unpredictable nature that's impacting us.
Mr. Mayor? If my workload matters, the 25th works for me as well. I have two projects on the night anyways.
It's a sequel to the Joe show.
Many, many to come.
And Mr. Mayor, as
Councilman Hogan.
As we mull this over, I just want to encourage the folks here, because a lot of the comments, most of the comments, were really around transportation. And there are several bills in the legislature about transportation funding, where they're taking sales tax funds to distribute to ITD, and there are some earlier bills that were to also distribute funds to local highway districts, like Ada County Highway Districts, to help expand our roads. And a lot of those have been shelved, and they're just going, the funding to AT, A, A, ITD, and if there are anything left over, yeah, it might go to the locals, so I would encourage you to take a look at what the legislatures are doing, encourage them to move that funding to the local level. And I know, yes, our state highways are important, but when, when you look and realize that a lot of people are traveling the local roads to get to their destinations and not the state highways, that's a, that's something we just, we need those, those dollars to expand, that's, that's what it's come down to, and, and so take a look at that, see what you'd like to do, and contact your local legislator for, for your thoughts on that. Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Burnt?
Mr. Mayor, I think maybe what we, the most prudent action is to move, continue this to the 25th, maybe temporarily, and then the mayor, myself, can speak tomorrow morning and come up with a date, maybe see what dates with counsel works, we can make sure we have a quorum, and, and schedule a special meeting for annexation approvals and, or proposals to that date, so I would, I would maybe propose us continuing this until the 25th, and then in a short time period, we'll have a special date that we can start continuing some of the past applications that we've continued.
Or ones that are gonna have to be continued next week, or potentially the week after.
Right, so thoughts on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Strater?
So would the idea be to communicate with the public that this will be scheduled on the 25th, and then hoping that we'll have an additional meeting to clean up some other items that we don't think involve as much participation from the public? Just hoping we can give the public certainty on that, if possible, that date for that hearing?
My recommendation would be no, that we move this one to the 25th and leave it at that date, because I think we're gonna set us, we'll have to set a special meeting still somewhere between the 20th and the 30th, that we will have to move likely next week's continued ones and the week after that. So it's really setting things up would be my recommendation, that, let's tell the public when this one will, in theory, come back. Much as I love Nextdoor and Facebook and the network, I think we should stick to a date and not let it be a game of telephone tell a friend when it starts to move.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Clarification, I guess what I'm hearing from you is likely maybe a motion to continue this item to the 25th, but some of the future items that we have before us that will likely be continued will work for a special meeting to capture those, likely on the 26th or at a later point in time.
Sometime in that last part of May.
That works for me. Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Maybe I guess a question for the applicant, and especially for those three homeowners associations that are represented, if the 26th works for, for both of them.
25th.
25th, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If the question's for me, I'll make whatever time works. Sooner the better, but I understand that the council is, is looking to have some sort of legislative action, and that's unknown. And I don't know how tabling it would be, you know, if we set it for the 11th. It sounds like that's a little too soon for the council, so we'll take whatever we can get, the sooner the better.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yes, I don't know if, I don't know if Ms. Alonso is still on, or the first gentleman who spoke. I guess the folks that said they were gonna bring their testimony, that are at least representing homeowners associations or anyone here, to make sure that that date works for them as well, and if not, let's give them the opportunity to testify tonight.
Mr. Mayor, Annette is also unmuted, if she would like to comment.
It's Alonso.
Are you there?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that works for me, the 25th is fine, or whatever other date you set for me, that's totally fine, I'll be there.
And with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hogan.
I move that we continue the public hearing on H 2020-0100 to Mar, April 25th. I'm sorry, we're in April, May 25th, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion of second to can you adjourn to May 25th, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, and the item is continued till the 25th of May. Thank you. For everyone's attention and understanding. With that, we are down to the future meeting topics, anything under that item, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Borton.
Just real quick, I had a good discussion with community development with regards to the presentation of staff reports at council meetings, and looking for ways to be efficient, and you might have noticed today was an example where we, we demoed a little more compressed presentation from staff, even though it was relatively simple projects. Because the staff report has all the detail, and we all prep and review it all in advance of the hearing, there may be opportunities for, for our planning staff to give us a more abbreviated presentation than reading the long script and preparing the long script, it makes their work a little easier, and they can instead use their time to focus on the big picture of what the application is and some of the decision points that became most relevant in the underlying hearing, kind of focus our attention, it's quicker, more pointed, and maybe more productive for us, so we'll get, I may have maybe a future meeting topic, maybe in June or July, to see what we liked and didn't like about some of these demos, and maybe the process gets better, so just a heads up that you'll see some of the abbreviated presentations when appropriate.
Counsel pay attention.
That's it.
With that, do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor? Councilman Burnt?
I move that we adjourn.
Second motion.
Motion of second, is adjourn the meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.